Six o'clock, I'm gonna go ahead and call our regular DeKalb City Council meeting of November 25th, 2024 to order. Roll call, please.
Zasada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Howell?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
A.D.
All right, wonderful. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Would Captain Hy-Vee lead us in the pledge, please?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody have a thank you.
You too, Seattle. Appreciate you, man. Good luck tonight.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. We take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Powell, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.D.
Agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations. We have none. And Agenda Item E, Public Participation. Mr. Charvat. And as a reminder, you have three minutes, sir.
I'm gonna make my comments regarding an Agenda Item coming up later on, I will not be here for that portion, regarding the tax increment financing district that you will be voting on later on in the agenda. I want to remind the council of words our mayor spoke at the TIF informational meeting that was held at Huntley Middle School. I clearly remember him telling the attendees that if the people did not want it, the city would not move forward with it. He said, "If you don't want it, the city will walk away from the idea." Now, I've attended that meeting, and I've also attended other ward meetings where this topic was discussed, and talked to a number of people as well on my own, and the residents clearly are not ready for the idea of the South Fourth Street TIF yet. I think we're moving on this much too quickly. A lot of them said they still need more information on this, or were firmly against the idea. I talked to very few people who said, "Hey, this is a great idea, let's move forward with it." Big issue I want to point out, and I don't know if anybody caught this on your backup material, but it appears that the maps have changed again. We changed the TIF map for the third time. We need to get an explanation, the public needs to get an explanation as to why some properties were not included. On the last iteration, they were included, and now they're not included in the TIF district. Why the third revision? That needs to be explained later on when you talk about this. The school district, in its discussion of the tax levy a couple weeks ago, pointed out something very interesting, which was in their backup material that was part of their agenda, that said that TIF was responsible for taking away $1.3 million from the budget of the school district. $1.3 million taken away because of TIF as it stands right now. So, how are they gonna make it up? How are other taxing bodies gonna make it up? Well, if you're suddenly at a loss, you lose a bunch of money, taxing bodies have the ability to do what they do best: tax. So they'll increase taxes on the rest of us to sustain that loss. So who pays for it? The taxpayers. So I urge a no vote on the TIF items coming up on the agenda later on. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. We have none. Then Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. I've got so much in my head right now, but... So, the consent agenda, number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 28th, 2024. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 12th, 2024. Accounts payable and payroll through November 25th, 2024, in the amount of $5,908,876.73. Number four, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, October 2024. Number five, DeKalb Police Pension Fund Municipal Compliance Report for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2023. And number six, DeKalb Fire Pension Fund Municipal Compliance Report for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2023. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any comments or questions, council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A.D.
Consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings. I'm gonna go ahead and call the public hearing to order at 6:05, and this is a public hearing for the proposed FY 2025 budget. Is there anyone here that wanted to speak on the 2025 budget? Come on up to the podium, then.
Part of the budget that's going to be discussed has to do a lot with the tax levy, since that was part of the background material here. I will give the city, this year, and this year only, an A+ on the city's portion of the property tax levy that is being discussed in this. The city's doing a good thing. I'm fully behind what the city is doing this time. I rarely come up here and say that, but this year, we're actually following our promises that we've made to try to help out the taxpayers. So I'm firmly behind the city portion of the property tax levy that's part of the budget. The library, on the other hand, eh, needs a bit of improvement here. Now, the library, of course, as you know, was originally proposing a $1.18 million increase from last year, when in the past they did about $300,000 increase every year. Library Board met last week, I attended that meeting, they decided to keep their tax levy at about $700,000, still an increase of $400,000 over the $300,000 they usually increase their levy every year. I firmly believe that the city council, and I mentioned this before, does have the ability to further lower the property tax levy of the library, since it's under your approval. Now, I'll be... I'll let you know, I'm somewhat happy that the library lowered its levy to hold the taxpayer harmless, but I believe they could do more. Instead of a $700,000 increase, I think maybe even a $500,000 increase from last year would be reasonable, based on the fact that we have a declining population in this town. They haven't really justified what they need all this extra money for, so I will stand by my comments from a couple weeks ago, based on what happened in this very council chambers in 2008, when the city did adjust the property tax levy. I have inquired from several of you, have sent emails, and I wanted to follow up on the city manager's comments from the last meeting, saying that the city could no longer change the property tax levy of the library. I have found nothing in state statute that tells me you can't. When you did it back in 2008, I firmly believe the city, as a home rule community, has that ability. Other towns have done it as well. So I would like some sort of citation in terms of what law is in effect that states that the city cannot change the property tax levy of the library. I haven't found anything. I've emailed you guys, none of you have gotten back to me on that. Regarding the budget itself, a couple things do concern me. Number one, the amount of new hiring going on in the budget. Now, I listened to the conversations before regarding the fact that pensions are gonna be a huge issue, they already are a huge issue, but they're only gonna get bigger in years going on beyond 2024 into the next 30 years. Pension liabilities with these hires is something we need to consider. So, we're kind of digging our own grave by hiring more people that I don't believe we're going to afford. Your children and your children's children will be paying these pension liabilities, assuming that the state does not change the way they do their formula, that it's really going to hurt us in the future. And if you want to talk about tax hikes, they're gonna happen down the road to pay for the pension obligations. So, I don't see how we can continue hiring at the pace we're hiring. You're only contributing to the liabilities that we have going forward. A small little note, it was brought up a few months ago by this council, one of the items in the budget that still kind of gets me, because it's not fair to every single citizen in this community, is the plowing and shoveling of downtown properties. Downtown business owners get a perk that no other business gets. They get free plowing, free shoveling of their sidewalks, and this is something that I agree with the comments that were made this past summer, when we talked about the idea of having an SSA downtown. I know that was not approved, but the fact is, I think this item should be removed from the budget. Other businesses don't get this, you don't get this at your homes, where the city comes and shovels your driveway. Why should downtown businesses get this, and no other business in town get this free service? So, this needs to... I firmly believe this needs to be removed from the budget. I've brought this up before, years gone by, most of you weren't on the council when I brought this up, about eight, nine years ago, and it's still an item. Don't know why we're giving... And I don't blame the downtown business owners, by the way. It's not their fault, they've just been getting this perk, and, boy, if I was getting this perk, I'd probably want to keep it as well. But, every other taxpayer does not get this freebie, we have to do our own plowing and shoveling of our own sidewalks, every other business has to do it as well. So, I'd like to see that removed from the budget, and, again, good job on the city property tax levy. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak on our proposed FY 2025 budget? All right, hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close this public hearing at 6:10. Moving on to Agenda Item I, Considerations. We have none. And then Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2024-115, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement relating to the South Fourth Street Tax Increment Financing District by and between the City of DeKalb, DeKalb County, DeKalb Community Unit School District, number 428, DeKalb Township, DeKalb Township Road and Bridge District, DeKalb Park District, Kishawaki Community College, DeKalb Public Library, DeKalb Forest Preserve District, and the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked at the last regular meeting two weeks ago about why an intergovernmental agreement, and we can return to that if you'd like. I'd just like to point out that, as I mentioned last time, there is a history here that TIF I was ultimately converted into a surplus-producing TIF in its last years. TIF III was, and remains that way, and the proposition before you tonight is a surplus-sharing IGA that would attach to the proposed TIF IV, or South Fourth Street TIF. And, it has a lot to do with where we've been with TIF, and what we're trying to do now with TIF, and to be much more transparent. And, a part of that is through cooperation with the other taxing bodies who contribute, the largest part, obviously, to the TIF fund the city contributes to, but they have for... They did for a long time want to be more involved in decisions, and also about projects, too. So we developed that system back in 2019, we've carried it forward, and here we are today. So the IGA looks very much like the IGA for TIF III. Just a little different numbers, in effect. Actually, it's not quite as... Not as much as shared over time as there is in TIF III in terms of percentages, different dollars, different number of parcels, and so forth. But, in this case, it would... For the first year, there would be no... As the first dollars are being accrued, there would be no revenue sharing, and then through the seventh year, there would be a 30% revenue sharing, and after that, 50/50. In TIF III, it was from the beginning, there would be a 33% sharing, and then went to 50/50 after the sixth year accrual. So, that's what we have, I don't want to burden you, but if you have questions, I'll be happy to zero in and go down. Just talking, although we'll address this more directly as we get to the ordinances, I did want to say that we've had a lot of public meetings on this TIF, going back to the first JRB consideration of this in January, that would have been... JRB meets the month following the quarter just closed, so it would have been the fourth quarter close of '23, and we met in January and talked about where we were at the end of '23 in terms of TIF III, but then we started talking about the possibility, based on the council's interest, of a TIF IV for the South Fourth Street corridor. And at that time, we talked about, what are we talking about geography-wise? Where is this gonna be? Where's the beginning and end? And you may remember, the first proposed map that you saw was in late January, early February, I think it was in early February, and a lot of the area right now was colored in in the middle. You see, it looks like kind of a donut with a huge hole in it. There were too many parcels that we found out, but we didn't know that at the time. We said, "Let's use this as a hypothesis, will this work? Is most of this area gonna qualify for a conservation area?" One of the key criteria to qualify for TIF, under state statute. The fieldwork was done in April, and after that fieldwork, working with Adam Stroud, who's here from PGAV, and he can address some questions for you if you'd like, we determined at the JRB meeting that we probably ought to cut down the geography, that there weren't significant qualitative differences between some of the mini... Or the sub-areas, the smaller micro neighborhoods in the middle than, say, three or four blocks outside the TIF that we had originally proposed. So the map did change, and since the beginning of August, there have been three mailings that have gone to all the people whose properties, or businesses, or some businesses or two, would fall in the TIF. And, every one of the parcels received the mail. We had certified mailings, we have also regular mail, when we are inviting people to come to the open house, that was a regular mail. And each of those three, and I have, if somebody wants to query it, they're happy, they can call our FOIA officer and do it. Every one of these parcels, we have whether there was a return, or an attempt to resend, and the like, very few, you know, a handful in all three cases, and they're typically the same ones. Nobody who is in the TIF that's before you tonight failed to get mail. And this is a verification through the post office. I'm gonna put that to rest. So if you're still working on a map that came out in February, and you haven't done your homework since then, that's what you're gonna see. Okay. So the IGA, so far, other taxing bodies have been discussing this. It's been discussed at the township level so far. Kishawaki College and Township have voted in support of it. The school district got either this week or next... I think it's next week, we'll take this up, as well as their levy, unless I'm mistaken about the levy discussion, I think it's the same night. And several others have, it's before you now. I think it's important that, if you favor the Tax Increment Financing District, I think this is an essential piece of it, or else we don't have the cooperation of the other taxing bodies, and it's their money we'd be using. So ultimately, it is the council's decision, but we, at the staff level, anyway, hardly recommend that there be some framework going forward to identify the buy-in of the other taxing bodies. That's my preamble for tonight.
Counsel, questions, comments? Yes, Alderman Verbic.
This process has come a long way. Great work to you and your team. It's interesting that reading and reviewing the JRB minutes along the way answered every question that I had, in addition to those that had contacted me directly, so, thank you. One suggestion, though, is, I believe it's the DeKalb County Forest Preserve, and not just the DeKalb Forest Preserve?
Okay, and I'll check the signature pages, too, just to make sure. Thank you. Oh, DeKalb County has voted in favor of it, there was discussion, and then the Forest Preserve, less of a dissenting group.
Yes, Alderwoman Zazada.
I think this IGA is a brilliant solution to the challenges presented, and I appreciate you bringing it to us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Perkins.
I'll echo Alderman, yet other Alderman's comments. Bill, great work getting all the stakeholders to build consensus with this, you know, because I know it's... We have some history here, and achieving their buy-in took some work, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any others? Alderman Walker.
You know, I do have a question, though. So, so we have three part... No, three District 428 buildings in this, right?
Yes, sir.
And two park districts. So the thing that kind of worries me, and maybe I'm getting this wrong, is, so in all actuality, let's say this goes through, the school district 428 would definitely, I believe, raise their levies, just for the simple fact that they wouldn't get that money, you know, that's otherwise generated to them, they wouldn't get that money anymore. So, I just, you know, and I think I read on November 12th that someone complained that the reason why they're raising their levies is because of, you know, of a TIF, TIF III, I believe. I could be wrong. So, I know everybody, you know, I know everybody thinks that this could be a good idea, but, I mean, and it could be, but it just worries me that this could be a reasoning for them, for everybody, you know, to raise their levies, you know? I just, I guess it just worries me. So, yeah, they pay in, but they really don't, if I'm making sense, and how are we to understand, or how are we to trust them that they won't always raise their levies and blame it on this? Yeah, they agree with it now, because it sounds good, but soon as it gets pushed through, then, you know, I know we have to vote on it, I get that, but we're all not gonna be on the council forever, and, you know, we don't know who will be up here, and who makes deals, and all that. So, I'm just saying, it kind of... I guess it kind of worries me a little bit, because if that does happen, then taxes do go up. That's just the name of the game, I believe. So, is there any, like, agreement legally that we could get from them, saying, you know, "We won't raise your levies high," you know, or?
Well, here's an anecdote, and it's right in the... It's in the plan, but it's very specific in the IGA.
Yes, sir.
And that is, that only the council can vote to approve a project.
Right.
So, if you vote, if, as you say, that plays out, and I don't know that it would, but if it did, then you can vote against, and you can argue here, in this court of public opinion, against proceeding with a positive vote. So, ultimately, this council has the authority to proceed, and, of course, it's easy, and we're not... How do I put it? So, the makeup of this council, as with the other taxing bodies, is a matter of the result of elections. People should be, in a democracy, queried about, "What do you think about this, and what do you think about that?" So presumably, people come into office with their views pretty well-known, and they don't get to office unless there's enough support for them. So, in this democracy, there are lots of checks and balances, and I guess they could be asking the same thing of us, frankly. How come you voted, first thing out of the box, to spend $4 million on the repair of South Fourth Street? What about the houses and the buildings and all the rest of that? So there's gotta be public discussion, and there's got to be... And I'm not saying that's what you do, or that'd be even a proposition in front of you, but, in other words, this is all give and take, and there's nothing given about what happens from here. I think the framework is good, and fair, as fair as I think we could divine at this point. And then it's a matter of people acting on principle to make sure it stays that way, or in practice, it plays out that way.
I think part of it, too, is, if there was no new economic development, we weren't building another house, another commercial building wasn't being built, that argument is absolutely valid argument, because the taxing bodies are gonna lose some revenue in the process. But with the historic unprecedented economic development we have going on right now, the slice of TIF that we're talking about is minor compared to the increased revenue that they're seeing right now. And I think a perfect example is, you know, we've been doing these taxing summits every year, and really been advocating, and council has, and the citizens, and those listening at home, have gone to school board meetings and park board meetings to really advocate for holding the taxpayer harmless. What we're seeing this year might be one of the first years that, I'm not gonna say every one of them, but the school district is putting money back in people's pockets, we are, the library, I think the park district as well. We're seeing a lot of people getting on board with this new kind of philosophy of governing of, how can we have all this increased revenue, but also make sure the taxpayer is part of the conversation, or to hold the taxpayer harmless? So, when it comes to the amount of TIF that, I think someone threw out over a million dollars the school district's gonna lose, I assume that must be over the duration of the TIF, because next year, the DeKalb school district doesn't lose over a million dollars because of this TIF. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. It's gonna take a long time to get to those kind of dollars. We keep doing, and what previous councils have done, so I gotta give a lot of credit to those that have been on council for a long time, and our previous mayors and administration, the economic development that we have coming in, and it's gonna continue for the foreseeable future, I'm hoping the decisions we're making, and one of them that we're gonna make tonight, is gonna continue that process. This idea of TIF, other government entities actually raising their levies to make up for the TIF, is not in the conversations that I've had with any of the taxing bodies. So, we're in a really good spot, and, in fact, I believe if there was ever a time to do this, this is the time to implement a TIF. Alderwoman Zazada.
I'll hold my comments.
Okay.
But, thank you, I agree, you're wholeheartedly right.
Yeah. Alderman Perkins.
Alderman Walker, your comment's spot on. I think the thing is, though, with our... The way our community is set up, I think it's... All of us taxpayers need to hold each of these different taxing entities to account for what they're doing, you know, and I think it's... Each year, it's a planning process that resets itself every year, based on the budgets and their priorities, which is one of the reasons we're in this spot, and I'll speak to that on the TIF a little later. But, it's... I think that's the key. That's the key part of the process, is when they're looking at adjusting their levy, for whatever reason, making sure that they've got the detail and a solid plan for, and we agree with what they're gonna be using it on. We, as taxpayers, that is. So, just my thought.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2024-115 passes. Moving on to number two, Resolution 2024-116, authorizing agreements for insurance coverage effective December 1st, 2024 through December 1st, 2025, in the amount of $869,453. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The coverage in question is our liability, our annual liability and comp coverage, two different pieces, which we usually take together at this time of the year. We also, as some smaller coverages are known, we usually bring something to you in January, dealing with both the airport and the pollution liability, smaller pieces, both in terms of cost and actual impact on city operations. But obviously, liability, as in any business, we are responsible for what happens, what we do, and also what may happen to us. And when it comes to workers' comp, we follow the mandates and statutes of the state of Illinois, and we provide comp coverage, and sometimes that requires the compensation of claims. We have talked about this off and on over the years. The one-year renewal package for you this year is up. The 25 package overall is, if you look at page 12, there's a little chart there, is up about 10.5%. And, we don't feel that that is, and we've been told by talking to our broker, that this is a little bit better than the average, is somewhere around 20% around the municipal market. So, we recommend this. What we are also going to do, though, is look at the market a little bit earlier. What usually happens is, we're part of a large pool, but we're a relatively smaller employer when it comes to municipalities in northern Illinois. And, to get quotes within a month of the deadline for paying is never a great idea. So we're looking to... Michelle Anderson, Director of HR, and I are going to be looking in the market, probably February, March, and see what we can scratch up, to see who's out there, who's hungry, and who might want to work with us. Another side of this, other than the cost, is customer service, because whether it's our employee or our resident, if there's a liability claim, and we are involved, we want to be responsive. We don't... We can't always agree on what the shakeout of the facts may be, but we want to make sure that we are as responsive as possible, and we are there to shoulder our responsibility if need be. So, that requires good customer service, not only on our part, but also on the part of the third-party administrators, who are our go-between, between the large behemoth insurance companies and the payouts that we end up having to give. So, it's very important that we get calls back, because people expect us to tell them in answer to their questions that day, or absolutely soon as possible. We can't wait three weeks and say, "We're still working on it." That's not a good way to do business, and as not a good way to do business. And as a municipality, I think that's not the first-class treatment we, we should be giving employees and residents. So, uh, we, we want to get the best, uh, and we're, we want to look for it.
Council, questions, comments? Alderman Perkins?
Couple things. Has the, has the broker given any indication that there's any end in sight to this? And, and I say that as a bit of a bully pulpit here, because the insurance prices or costs are going through the roof.
Yeah.
Not, not just here, and actually, ten, ten percent, we're doing all right with that.
We, we do, uh, we do check what's happening with other municipalities, and there are, there are tighter costs.
I guess I'm, I'm speaking more so in respect to the industry, not necessarily our, our practice of quoting things, because quoting things takes some time. I'm just speaking more so to the, to the industry costs. Because, you know, all this stuff that's going on with, with hurricane damage, it all pools up into big pools that are peanut buttered across everybody.
They do.
You know, so.
So I can't, I wish I could say, great news.
So the broker didn't give any indication?
No. Twenty-five or twenty-six is not going to be remarkably better.
Right, okay. Um, secondly then, so I, are we reviewing our, um, our deductible levels to try and mitigate some of these price increases as well?
Yeah, uh, we, that's all part of what, when you go out to the market, then you have to give them a, a, what do you call it? A, a sheet, a, uh, fact sheet, in effect. Uh, these are the things we want to see, and maybe here's an alternate, we'd like to see this too. They'll only go so far with us. We're, we, we don't have as much leverage as we'd like, but we can throw out a couple of options and see what they, how they cost out.
So I just know, we, we've had to do that with rental properties, and basically, look at it a little differently and say, you know what, what's the likelihood of the property burning down, you know?
Yeah.
And then, and maybe you're, maybe we need to evaluate our, our risk tolerance, you know, just as, as a, as a means of mitigating some of the price increases. And that's just a spitball thought, really.
We, we tend to have to be a little more conservative, you know, and you can't be cut short because we have to provide those services. Like, if a fire station, I'm not even going to use this as an example, but if there were, but if, if we had a fire there, we'd be in, we'd be in pretty good shape. Most of the time, unless the barn is empty, right? But, uh, there are other, other things that, uh, we have to show up the next day and provide services, whether we have a building behind us or not. So, uh, we have to be pretty cautious and conservative about how we price that stuff.
Every year, workman's comp, health insurance.
Oh, yeah.
Commercial coverage. I mean, it's just, it's crushing, uh, for a small business as well as, yeah, a city. I'd, I'd love if you had that crystal ball. That'd be pretty awesome. Alderman Zizana?
What's inland marine?
Well, we, we do have a boat and a fire department for rescues, but that's not what it is. So that's a generic term for certain kinds of minor coverage, uh, and, and, uh, if you want to go into depth in that, I would call it, Michelle, okay.
It's just things that happen in water, maybe?
No, not necessarily. That's, it used to be that, uh, marine, so it goes back to sailing days. So, uh, they would, they would, uh, uh, one of, some of the earliest liability and, uh, wasn't comp in, in the eighteen hundreds, but the liability, liability insurances were about whaling ships. And so inland marine made some sense. If you were closer to shore, there was a certain pricing, and if you went out into the great, uh, hereafter, you'd, uh, have to pay more, so.
Thanks.
And Chief Thomas, didn't we use that boat, uh, when the guy drove into the lagoon? I, I think that was part of the rescue.
That's, that's not what's driving our cost.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please. Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mia Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I?
Resolution two zero two four dash one one six passes. Moving on to number three, resolution two zero two four dash one one seven, authorizing an engineering services agreement with Backstrom Woodman to provide detailed design, permitting, and bidding services for a sixteen-inch transmission main of approximately three point eight miles for a not-to-exceed price of five hundred and ten thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Super excited to hear about this. City manager.
Okay, so, uh, we could go way deep. I'm going to go shallow. We're talking about wells here tonight, so I'm going to shallow to, to, to moderate. And, uh, and I can answer questions. Also, we have representatives of Backstrom Women in our audience tonight who are also willing to, uh, fill in pieces of this. So you may recall, as I said in my, as I begin my background on this, that it was, uh, in October, it's still over a year ago, two thousand twenty-three, that we hired Backstrom Women to do what we estimated to be about a year-long study of our, uh, master study, we'd call it, of our water system, and, uh, the existing system, and also, uh, new demands on the system since the last study was done back in two thousand six, uh, uh, interestingly by Backstrom Women. Backstrom Women is very familiar with our, our water system. Uh, we've, we've been providing everything that we have available to us in terms of, uh, records and, and facts that would be of advantage to them. Uh, the, the report is roughly done at this point, and I'd like to say, well, let's just take our time, bring this back in April, May, uh, let's have a nice couple of meetings and talk about it. But what's interesting is, we're, we're running a utility here, that's our water utility. There are other utilities out there, as we know, that in, in, impact development in our area. And I don't think it's news to anyone who's watching this tonight, that we are in a growth mode right now. And, uh, land that is within our current city limits is of interest to those who may wish to develop property for industrial or other purposes. Uh, in addition, there, there is, uh, land that is proximate to some of our, uh, some of the areas of the Chicago West Business Center, south of Gerler, uh, which is, um, under intense scrutiny right now. So without saying any more about that, I think you trust that in the past, when we've mentioned these, these vague phrases, that, that there is serious interest, and we're not just, uh, talking about, wouldn't it be nice if, uh, we're, we're getting that. And as you well know, uh, the electrical utility, uh, the, the wastewater treatment utility is also very much involved in this. So, uh, part of the reason why this is on the agenda tonight is, uh, we, we have, we have no interest, I believe, I speak for the council on this, I speak for the staff on this, when I say we have no interest in being behind the wave. We want to be up with the wave so that when we are, we are being, uh, considered for investment by people who want to come here and make some very significant investments in our community, that we are ready. And you know, it was just five years ago that we were ready, because of the results of, of our actions taken following that two thousand six study, where we thought we needed to at least get some water in a position so it was across the tollway, and we were able to feed into what later became a Chicago West Business Center. In addition, we did some infrastructure improvements, such as we, after two thousand and six, we built, uh, five, six, uh, five shallow wells, uh, to address a radium problem, and, and, uh, and also to spread the, the way that the city taps into two major aquifers. I could, we could go further down that if you'd like. Uh, I, I did note in the background what our average daily pumping is, and what our capacity is, and what I'm projecting are very conservative numbers. Uh, we could pump, uh, tomorrow, twelve million gallons a day. We, we're not going to do that because we'd wear out the pumps and, and the, and a lot of equipment if we tried to keep at that pace. It'd be like running your car at a hundred miles an hour and never stopping. Uh, nine point seven million is a number that we've given for a lot of years about what our, our maximum would be, allowing for doing some alternating peak, off-peak kinds of pumping. But even more conservative than that, what we've shown here is about six, six point eight million gallons a day, which is, is just looking at a day of pumping, uh, at sixteen hours. So we're, we're trying to cut this down. We don't want to, um, overstate the need, and on the other hand, we don't want to understate what our capacity is. So it's, it's, it's a very conservative, uh, picture that we're painting here. Uh, I'm giving this background because we have the ability to prepare for the future. And one way you prepare for the future is to look at what it would cost to, not only to expand, but also to enhance and, and update our existing, uh, model that we have for providing water to potable water. Uh, we have, uh, done this in the past. This, the city paid for, uh, the, uh, two new towers that were built in the nineties, and one in the nineties, one in the early two thousands, uh, and, uh, one on the north, one on the south side. We had the east and west towers before, and there's a reason why they look a little different, because we were expanding not only the storage capacity, uh, per, per tower, but also, uh, locating them in ways that would, would, uh, enhance future growth. But I mentioned the, the five deep wells. We're looking at the possibility, just to keep a nice, safe, uh, excess, uh, in terms of water flowing into our system, a shallow well. It can come in, by the way, anywhere on our, on our scope of, of land, but it, it would most likely come in on northwest side, where we have the ability to, uh, tap in a shallow, another shallow well that would feed into an existing treatment plant that's got the capacity for it. That would add another million gallons per, per, uh, per day. So, uh, so there are two phases of what we'd like, or there's one phase with two pieces that we'd like to, uh, get more information on. And the only way to do that is to actually start, uh, going from the, from the general to the very specific, which is to basically design the first two parts of Phase One, which is, uh, expanding the, the, uh, looped water main to the south of, of, uh, the meta, basically, and down to Kesseling. And you, you have in front of you a large eleven-by-seventeen version of what was in your background, and that helps you read it a little bit. You can see the, the puffery around the, the land and, uh, that would be, uh, or the, the route which would be in question. And then the, the other thing that's not shown here is the possi-, so we have several options that we're looking at for, uh, well to be drilled on the northwest side, approximately in the vicinity of where the convo center is and west to Nelson Road. So somewhere in that area on, on the north or south side of the street, uh, there's more work to be done there, uh, to, to find out if we're going to, we want to hit the aquifer in the right way. We don't want it to, to miss, basically. The aquifer we're looking at at that shallow, uh, level is about three miles wide, but it's about six, how, how long is it? It's about sixty-five miles long, something like that. But it's very narrow. So we want to be able to, to hit it in the right way to get the maximum pumping. So, uh, there's, before you deny it, a contract, it's for five hundred and ten thousand dollars to Backstrom Woodman. And the idea there is to have plans ready so that we can see approximate, at least the engineer's estimate of what the cost is now that we've done the plans. And then we go to the E P A and we talk to them, are you interested in working with us on this particular project? And is it also possible you would work with us on the well drilling, uh, project? But we have to start somewhere. And I didn't want to just blow this by you, hey, here's a contract, we love it, uh, support it. I wanted to give you a little bit of background, because you don't have the full study in front of you, but I can tell you, we've been back and forth with our, our friends and representatives from Backstrom Woodman now for a couple of months about what if. And I think we're at that point where we need to get going, also in terms of outside in, interest in our community. If we shelve this and say, let's, let's just poke at this for a while, it won't serve us when we go to others who may be able to help fund us, and it won't help us in terms of attraction. Uh, it's a very competitive market, as you know, and, uh, if we're not ready, somebody else will be ready.
Council? Alderman Zizana?
Um, so, I imagine we don't have the answer to this question, but one of the things that comes to mind is the question of, you know, this three-mile-wide by sixty-five miles aquifer.
That's a shallow, shallow, uh, it's, it's one of the two aquifers, and that's where the shallow well would go.
Do we run at any sort of risk? Has anyone done any modeling for at what point in time we'll use it up?
Well, not even use it up, but are we using more than is being regenerated?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
I, I made a pass at, at this, and I could have said more, and, and our friends from Backstrom Women could say more. But, a couple of key points. Uh, we monitor on a monthly basis, with reports that go to the I E P A, where we are with levels in all of our wells. So if you could imagine a well as a, as a very narrow glass, and you've got a straw in there, obviously, if you're drawing more than is being regenerated, it's not anywhere near your tap, uh, you're going to see that level go down, down, down. It's about the same.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that we don't need to be careful stewards and managers of this. It just means that, for one thing, we're seeing in some of the development to the south, even though they're using water for cooling in some, some of the buildings, and other buildings are just, large warehouses, there's just a lot of bathrooms, uh, not, not using a lot. But, uh, when, when you're talking about water as cooling, uh, then you want to know, how many cycles is it going through before it's discharged? And ultimately, it does go to, for treatment and goes back into the Kishwaka River, goes to the, uh, K W R D for treatment, and then gets discharged directly into the, in a matter of days, into the Kishwaka River. So it does go back pretty quickly, uh, into the system. Uh, we are not seeing the kind of, uh, use that was originally projected when we first started negotiating with these companies. Their es- their estimates of need, their actual need has been much less than we thought. Now, uh, that's, that's a benefit, but we have to watch, and we have, as we engage others, we're not doing this frivolously. We're, we're trying to, this is one of the key things. Electrical power is another key thing, but that's not what's on our, our desk tonight. But, uh, the water is, that's what we're in control of for now and for posterity. So we have to be concerned about that.
Part of the reduction in the estimates, uh, that you're talking about when it comes to consumption, especially from a data center perspective, is the technology that they have from a recycling perspective. The water that they bring in, how long they're able to use that same water, and what they finally, uh, release back into the system essentially, is far greater than we originally had anticipated. And I would imagine, over time, that technology's going to continue to improve, where they'll consume a lot at first, but again, their ability to reuse and recycle what they have has been pretty impressive.
And they're, they're, uh, uh, since we're talking very generally about data centers, they are, uh, looking at smaller buildings now so that the cooling needs are, are more, uh, are moderated in, in terms of, uh, any given day, what, what's required, uh, what needs to be kept in reserve.
Yeah, it was pretty cool, if you tour Meta's data center, especially during the winter, the way they actually open up their vents and bring in cold air from the outside. And we saw little snowdrifts in there, um, to be able to really take advantage of the climate that we have, which is beneficial for a certain period of the year, uh, which also reduces the amount of water that they would be bringing in for cooling as well. They're pretty, they're, they're cognizant of it. I mean, they're good corporate stewards, really trying to figure out how they can make the smallest impact possible. And I have a feeling, any data center that might be interested in coming here in the future, if that's one of the ones that we build out to, is going to have the same set of standards, essentially. Because if I remember right, Meta, um, the data centers that they build, it's open source. They all share the technology that they have for constructing these things in order for all those companies to contribute towards, how can we make, um, better, less carbon footprint, um, less water needs, uh, less cooling needs of the data centers that are out there. It's a pretty impressive initiative that these companies can come together to work for the greater good of the planet, as opposed to just the greater good of themselves. Alderman Walker?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Alderman Smith?
Phil, when do you, when will this be done so we can get it to the I E P A? Thursday?
It's holidays, man.
Karina?
Next week.
Sorry. There's a couple of different.
Can you come up to the mic, ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah. We have a lot of people, uh, listening from home, and then we also record and, uh, have it for posterity's sake.
Yes, no worries.
Karina, just mention your name, that, that's what we do.
I'm Karina, um, Karina Petrov from Backstrom Woodman. Um, we put together a couple different schedule options. Um, it all depends on I E P A's, how many projects they get per year and their funding schedule. They're on a, a July to June fiscal year, so it depends on when you get the project plan in, which is something we're also working on right now. Um, and then, if you get on the intended funding list and they have the loan funds available for you, then everything's great and we can get started immediately. Um, so I think one of the things that we're trying to push forward with design now for is because the I E P A scores projects based on readiness. And if we have everything ready and in front of them, and design is done, and we are permitted, et cetera, um, we're likely to score higher. et cetera, we're likely to score higher on their list. So, schedule-wise, we are looking to submit the project plan in January, so, and then they need six months to review and approve. So hopefully, we get approval of that July twenty twenty-five, and we can be ready with design, final design, June twenty twenty-five. So depending on the list that I just mentioned, we could be, we could have I E P A loan fund commitment January twenty twenty-six or July twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
So construction after that, depending on where we are. Now, what if, what if we're not approved? We've been working on a plan for that. We are in a favor, because of the management of the water system by Mr. Favor and others over a lot of years, we're just coming out of some larger, like the two thousand and six era, EPA loans, which are down to, the two left are around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars left. Literally, out of the water fund, we could write a check and close that out, and we could replicate that without seeing a change, if you will, in the revenue versus expenditure, other things being equal and so forth. So will that be enough? Not quite. We don't know where we're going to be with costs until we get the plans done and what that might be. But we have the ability with what we're doing now without doing anything different. We do a COLA adjustment to our water rates in April usually of the year so that the July bill reflects what that might be. That's a, just a, that goes back to when we used to be on the July first to June thirtieth budget, and people are expecting something as they're starting to use more and more water. It's good to let them know before they do. And so I think we're, as Karina was saying, we'll be in pretty good shape to know where we're going at mid-year.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A I?
Resolution two zero two four dash one one seven passes. And I should have said this earlier, when your agenda item has come and gone, there's no obligation to stay. So anyone in the audience, if you have no reason to stay here, we don't take exception to that or offense to that. So we know everyone's busy and they got lives to lead. All right, moving on to Agenda Item K, Ordinance's second reading. Number one, Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five three, authorizing the twenty twenty-four levy and twenty twenty-five collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes in special service areas of the city of DeKalb for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we last met, Mayor Barnes and Alderman Perkins and I attended several meetings with the Library Board, and I'm happy to report, as I did in my background, that the Library Board has reduced the proposed library levy to four million ninety thousand and thirty-one dollars. That represents a levy increase in two thousand and twenty-four of about seven hundred two dollars, seven hundred two thousand one hundred twenty dollars over the twenty-three library levy. That increase is about four hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars lower than the original Library Board request. And you see a chart, or excuse me, a table on page seventeen of your background, and for people watching, you can't see that, but unless you've got it in front of you. But that, other things being equal, our best guess at the E A V for the library in the city is pretty accurate, they're right at the same out-of-pocket impact, tax impact on the average homeowner. The rate would go down from point three five five seven three to point three one oh four three. That then lowers our aggregate levy, which is a combined levy of the library and the city. The city's proposed levy hasn't changed in this two-week period. And the ordinance reflects both the library change and then also the change in the aggregate levy, which is reflected in the ordinance attached to your agenda tonight.
Counsel, questions or comments? Yes, Solomon Walker?
Hey, I got a question for Mr. Rose. Can we just put this, we can change the levy to that as far as the law, what it requires or, you know, just so we're just clear on it?
Yeah, this issue, excuse me, has come up repeatedly throughout Illinois history, and the Illinois Legislature and the Local Library Act has expressly provided language that has said that the city shall accept the corporate levy of the library. The question about whether it would, the city has a home rule power to reject the library's levy. The home rule powers of the city pertains to your government and affairs, and the argument would be, is that the library, even though it's a department of the city, is also known as a quasi-independent body, it's an independent body, and it wouldn't actually pertain to your government and affairs to reject their levy. So if it was challenged by the library where we would reject their levy, it would be, in my opinion, that they would, library would likely prevail in that litigation. It's happened, and that's why the Illinois Legislature did what they did. And there's Supreme Court opinions back in the early nineteen eighties called Gill versus the city of Rockford that kind of speak to the issue as well. And then the legislature took specific action to correct what had happened. Doesn't mean it, you know, that this issue doesn't, it repeatedly comes up throughout Illinois local governments, and just because, you know, that something may have happened doesn't mean that it was legal or illegal, it just means that if it was challenged here, the city would likely lose, in my opinion. And the question is, is it worth that challenge to you? Yep.
Any other comments or questions, Counsel?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm seeing none, so roll call, please.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A I?
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five three passes on second reading. Number two, Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five four, abating taxes levied for corporate purposes of the city of DeKalb, Illinois for the tax year twenty twenty-four bonds. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Powell, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This comes forward without any revisions since the last regular meeting. If you look at the ordinance that's attached to your agenda tonight, you'll see, we call out the general obligation bonds, we've got five remaining, and one of those includes our payment on some library debt that was entered back in two thousand and thirteen and then was partially refinanced in two thousand and twenty-two, and it remains an obligation of ours.
Counsel, questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A I?
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five four passes on second reading. Moving on to Agenda Item L one, Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five nine, adopting the annual budget and non-bargaining unit pay plan of the city of DeKalb, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderman Zazada, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. For those who don't know much about our budget, there's a fair amount of detail in the front of this agenda background, but the council and our finance advisory committee have spent a lot of time on the, first, the broad outline, and then back on the eighteenth, went basically department by department, fund by fund through the budget, so it's pretty well-known to the council at this point. The other piece that comes with the budget is the last couple pages of the budget document itself, which defines the pay ranges of all the non-bargaining unit positions that are part of the city personnel package. So we recommend on first reading only your approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? Yes, Solomon Smith?
Bill, thank you for the streets dollars extra, what are we, four?
Four and a half million now.
Four point five million. Much needed, I know we're way behind and have been for years before most of us were sitting here, so, thank you.
You're a great advocate of that, too, Alderman Smith, for all of you that are out there. He's tenacious when it comes to investing extra money in our streets. So thanks for you driving that and support of it.
Is tenacious the word?
Yeah. There's other adjectives, but I thought that was a kind one. He's aggressive, which is awesome. And that's what's great about the representation that we have here in the city of DeKalb. All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
A I?
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five nine passes on first reading. Moving on to Agenda Item L two, Ordinance two zero two four dash zero six zero, approving the tax increment redevelopment plan and project for the South Forest Street TIF redevelopment project area. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Powell, City Manager.
Thank you. Adam Stroud is here tonight from P G A V and is also available to answer any questions you may have. There are three ordinances here that are, they should be taken separately, but they all connect with one another, not unlike what we've done when we annex property, the annexation and development agreement, where you lay out the reciprocal terms and conditions, responsibilities. That's the meat of it. After that, you vote on annexation and then finally rezoning. Here, we've got, the meat of the proposed TIF is the redevelopment plan and project for the South Forest Street redevelopment area. The map is obviously a part of that, but there's also, it's also important, and I referred to it a little bit at the top of the meeting, that the number of public meetings we've had going back to January, the J R B meeting, and February, there was a council meeting where we approved the consulting agreement, P G A V, April. It was the first, we had a J R B meeting, and we had, also had discussion with the staff of P G A V, looking at some quick notes that they had gotten from their walk around the area and their study of the area, looking at conditions. In August, the council had a meeting where there was an Interested Parties Registry, so people wanting a little bit more notice of documents, specific documents, were given an opportunity to enroll in that. We didn't have many, we had a few. Then we had the informal open house at Holley Middle School on September twenty-fifth, a special J R B meeting on September twenty-seventh, and that was where the J R B talked very specifically about whether they supported or didn't support the redevelopment plan, which is the gist of this ordinance. And they agreed unanimously on two things, that the proposed TIF area does qualify as a conservation area, as determined in the TIF plan, and that the properties in the planned area are not reasonably anticipated to be improved but for the direct participation of the city to provide funding in the form of financial incentives and infrastructure spending. Then in late October, the J R B considered the I G A, which we've had some conversation about, and the I G A was, again, before you, two weeks ago, and it's before you tonight. The council supported that, so I recommend that, in behalf of our staff and P G A V folks, that you approve this on first reading tonight.
Counsel, Alderman Perkins?
So believe it or not, I do have some thoughts on this, that have been involved in this. And I guess that a key, a couple of key elements, you know, if we take a step back, and I'll take, I'll take a step back fifty years, because that's when I, when I first have memory of this section of road, was literally fifty years ago. And every year, I think the timing here is perfect, because right now, we're working, we're working on budgets, we're looking ahead, we're forecasting what our needs are going to be for next year, the next couple of years. Fifty councils have gone through the same process every year, and for fifty years, this area has largely gone unaddressed. It's almost exactly as it was fifty years ago when I have my first memories. Now, in that sense, so every year, it comes up, and every year, there's something else that needs to be addressed. So the councils make their best decision and address what they need to have addressed. So then what happens is the properties begin to degrade. It doesn't mean the properties are degrading and everything's going in a handbasket, but, but what it does mean is, over time, things happen. A junkyard closes, and then we've got an area out there that has, that requires remediation. White hen closes. A K F C closes. So Twins closes. So all of those things push the property values to a point where they're not keeping up with the rest of the property values in the community. It's, you know, there's no tidal wave coming or anything like that, but all of this has happened over a period of time. This process has been a very deliberate process, where we've shared things all year with, with people, engaged the residents to participate in the process. So the process, one of the things I had mentioned earlier is, what I heard mentioned was, we need to slow down. We've been working on this for a year, very deliberative, very open with people's thoughts. And this TIF becomes a tool for the community because of what's happened to the properties over fifty years. So I'm wholeheartedly in support of it. I think it's a great tool that will allow us to start to, to save, to make some improvements in that area. And that area needs a little love. With all the development that's going on on the south side, I think this is a great time to put a tool in place that future councils can use to help improve the area. So thanks for the legwork, thank you for coming out and helping us with this, but I'm a big fan.
Any other comments or questions, Counsel? Alderman Powell?
I agree with Perkins. In my lifetime, I don't remember any improvements of the south side, and there's nothing there. I lived there, and I just think, right now, we don't have many other options on the table. There's nothing else going over there. We've did for downtown DeKalb, we've put money in North Enniglet, trying to get that back up. I just think Forest Street deserves something, and I don't know what else or what other option there is right now besides this. So I'm in full support. I haven't got any pushback from anyone. If you have or you have, I encourage you to have them reach out, but I haven't had that experience.
Other comments or questions? Alderman Walker?
Yeah, I get, you know, I get what both you guys are saying, and, you know, I agree to a certain extent, but, you know, is this area the best area for TIF? You know, what about the far east side of town? You know, there's not much going on there, and, you know, it's just, like the first word, older person said, you know, TIF just works fifty-fifty, you know? It could work or may not. And it's just, I don't know, that's a long, you know, time commitment for something if it doesn't work, but, you know, I guess we gotta have faith, right?
I also believe the responsibility falls on us as far as what we approve for projects coming forward for TIF, so that kind of lies on us anyway.
Oh, yeah, it relies on whoever's on council at that point, you're right.
Any other comments or questions? I will agree with Alderman Perkins and Alderman Powell. I can't go back fifty, but I can go back forty-two, forty-four years.
Maybe I shouldn't date myself like that, but...
But going to high school, and I mean, you also forgot about the Eagle Grocery Store.
Right.
Forest Street corridor, every year, every decade, has dwindled in what is being offered the residents out there. And I heard...
And I heard when I was going door-to-door as mayor, people were talking about, what about us, what about us, what about us? You're right, we've spent a lot of money on Antiglen North, we've spent a lot of money downtown DeKalb. This is the first time in most people's memory that the city council is truly going to start focusing on an important entry point to our community, but also a important segment of our community. And TIF is a catalyst for great change, we've seen it. So I, I'm emphatically in support of creating a TIF here, using it as a catalyst for economic development, and really, just improving the life of so many great people on that Forest Street corridor, and I think it's going to go beyond that. We used to go shopping there, we used to go to Twins a lot. That investment that we'll make on Forest Street won't just benefit the residents there, but I think it'll also benefit the residents of DeKalb. Yes.
I'd like to close on, on one, one last point that I want, I wanted to mention, and make sure that is out in the public. The one great thing about TIF is it ensures the money stays there.
Yeah.
It doesn't go into a general fund and then have account, have council make their decision on that it needs to go somewhere else. It stays there.
Good point.
You know, so that's, that's one of the things, one of the control measures I really like about it.
So the tax dollars of the residents there go directly towards projects that impact them directly?
Exactly.
Alderman Larson.
And I just, I mean, we all sit, and you, you see numbers in front of us, like we're from here or there, but to me, I sit here, and when we're in this group, we're all about DeKalb. It, it has nothing to do with certain wards or whatever. So I think all of us, as we are sitting here and running for reelection or whatever, to stay continued in this, it, I just think that we're all seeing the need to be really deliberate in getting the best choices down there. And so I think whatever council's going to be seated here, they're committed to DeKalb.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-060 passes on first reading. Moving on to number three, ordinance 2024-061, designating the South Street, South Forest Street TIF redevelopment project areas. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the designation is via the map, and so, as I said earlier, the map, which is part of the, the project plan, and which we talked about just briefly, which has been, the map has been the map since late July. Everyone who's in that map area has been notified, and, and quite a few have stepped forward, I'm, I'm pleased to say, and with questions. And I, I feel the questions about what, what's this and what is that, and oftentimes, people don't say, I think I like this, or I don't like it. They want to know that it's not going to harm them. Is, is government going to do any harm here? I think they're generally satisfied that's not the case.
Come, Alderman Verbeck.
And speaking of project area, Alderman Walker, I would certainly be interested in what could be done on East Lincoln Highway, for example. So I think we do keep our options open as to.
For sure.
Again, these important gateways to our community.
Yeah, I will say that previous councils had that opportunity, because the TIF extended all the way out to the airport.
Right.
And, and I, I think another discussion another time, but this, this is an example, it was a, it was a very expansive TIF, and the money that was coming in was not only some of it being stolen away for general operating purposes, but other things were just not being considered and done. I think, I like the way the council's approaching this, where we want to see projects, we want to know what we're going to invest in.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-061 passes on first reading. Moving on to number four, ordinance 2024-062, adopting tax increment financing for the South Forest Street TIF redevelopment project area. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbeck, City Manager.
You read this ordinance, it's pretty spare, but it basically references what we've talked about generally for almost 12 months now, and that is that, that TIF financing tool. What it is, what it can do, how it can create a surplus that can be used for projects, that's all it is. If you agree with the first two, you'll agree with this one.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-062 passes on first reading. Moves us on to agenda item M, reports and communications. Alderman Perkins, you just want to kick us off?
Um, you know, it, it's been a while since, since Halloween, but I don't know if anyone was downtown or saw the downtown for the Halloween thing. It was massive.
Yeah.
It was really cool.
Yeah.
And even, what was it, last week, the downtown for the cheerleading thing, again, was just rocking.
Yeah.
Everything was full, awesome.
Yeah. The chamber with Halloween does an amazing job, and they have the community that came out, I think we gave it around, gave out like 1,700 pieces of candy, I mean, it was nuts.
The whole downtown was full, both sides of the street.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Very cool.
Alderman Larson.
No report.
Alderman Zazada.
I've got my award meeting coming up December 3rd at 5:00 PM at Jefferson Elementary.
Alderman Smith?
No report.
Alderman Powell?
No report.
Alderman Walker?
Hey, yeah, I would like to give Andy's boys back there, the street division, some recognition. I'm on the street with those guys, you know, Monday through Friday, and those guys do a very great job, you know, and I almost seen one almost get ran over the other day. So, again, people, driving your cars, watch out for my boys, because I will chase you down in my UPS truck. And happy Thanksgiving to some of you.
Alderman Verbeck?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Mine had the W L B K radio show, as usual, once a month with T D Ryan, but they were also putting on their Let's Talk Turkey event, which they collect turkeys and hams for Thanksgiving. I showed up with my one turkey, but I was beaten to the punch by the DeKalb Fire Department, who, would you guys roll in there with Chief Thomas?
Uh, the local donated 186, I think, turkeys, and then a monetary donation.
Yeah, and, and share the monetary if you know it.
I don't know.
It was substantial.
Yeah.
And my understanding, if Shadow Gentry is right, and that guy's memory is usually pretty powerful, I think they had 180 to over 200 turkeys totally, and hams donated, and $5,000 contributed to the community. So, I mean, man. So always remember, T D Ryan and W L B K do two events. They do the Let's Talk Turkey right before Thanksgiving, and he's going to do Freezing for Food, which I think starts December, December 3rd? Is that what you said?
I think it's two weeks from now.
Two weeks, yeah. And that'll be out at Hy-Vee, where they're collecting non-perishable items. And he'll be out there for three days, literally freezing for food. So, two great events that'd be wonderful, you all can go out and support them in that. And then, oh, the, I, I want to commend Alderman Perkins for really helping drive the discussion with the library. We had, as we mentioned, productive meetings, not just one-on-one with some of the board members, and Emily Faulkner, shouldn't say that's one-on-one, but in a small group setting, and then going to the board meeting as well. So, nice job on that, Alderman Perkins. And that's it. What about you, City Manager?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I think all of you listening at home, I'm going to say I speak on behalf[1768.59]